Hi, everybody. Seven o'clock. Welcome to our workshop this evening. Deputy Mayor Woods is joining us remotely. We have some folks here in the audience and glad to see folks online with us. Welcome. This evening's meeting is a workshop. It is not a public hearing, but it is a meeting in which we'll take public comment on the work twice. There'll be two opportunities. First, on the primary topic for the evening, which is Sea Streak, the boats that that arrive and bring guests to visitors to the village, and then our other business matters that are on the agenda tonight. So first, an opportunity to request a vote to add or modify the agenda. Any? Okay, hearing none. Announcements. The village hall and all of the all village services are closed on Monday in Observation of Juneteenth, the federal holiday. And I wanted to throw out, based on feedback we've gotten about summer meeting schedules, I want to throw out having two meetings in July and August, the 13th and 20th in July, and the 10th and 17th. I know you're away at 17. But so we'll we'll make our our work compact in summertime.
I'm on the 17th as well.
Okay. So we can, as we get closer to the date, we can play, but those are my proposal is the smaller number of meetings when people are out enjoying their their summers. And obviously, if we need to, if we have bills that need to be paid, Jeff and Michelle will let us know that we need to call a session for that. 13th and 20th, and 10th and 17th. Okay. So our onto our primary topic, Sea Streak. So trustee Starbuck and I met with representatives from Sea Streak on the 3rd of June to hear their proposals for potential 2022 season of visits to Cold Spring. They did confirm that they intend to run their autumn weekend and would like to to contract to do that again. Saturdays and Sundays from September 17th through November 13th. They're also interested in exploring the possibility of running summer weekday tours, looking at Wednesdays and or Fridays from July 1st to September 16th. There've been no decisions made. This is the first time we're discussing it as a whole board. We're trying to do this in a very open way, have these discussions in public. And then we'll go back after we get feedback from the trustees and from the public. Go back and and just for for everyone's information, again, this isn't a public hearing, it's public comment and public comment is one of the items that we'll bear in mind as we make decisions about the contract with Sea Streak. So the goals for tonight are to identify community concerns and impacts from the boats to talk about that, to preserve what is a critical revenue source from docking fees, to talk about the value of that of that revenue, and then to balance, to have conversation about balancing that revenue against community concerns and impacts from boats. And then for us as as a team to determine the next steps with negotiations with Sea Streak. So Eliza, you've you've done the lion's share of the of the work on this. I'm turning the discussion over to you.
Sure. So we met with Sea Streak and and really they're just they're looking for opportunities to expand their business. They're not sure if weekdays is going to be a successful thing. It's really just a trial run for them. And we've expressed a lot of the concerns that certainly Mayor Foley and I have heard from residents and the concerns that that I was making sure that we were kind of cutting off were things like overcrowding, like at one point, I think there were boats that were 600, 800 people, and the whole village just felt inundated. And I always felt that was too much. It was too much for the businesses. It was too much for the residents. It was very uncomfortable. So we've we're looking at cutting those things, those those numbers back. So the crowds aren't as large across the board. And we've also, you know, there were also days when the Sea Streak would come twice a day and you would not have a four hour window. It'd be an eight hour window or nine hour window. And that also often felt like a really long crowded day with little relief. So those kinds of things we've cut off just from the start and said, you know, that didn't work for us. We tried it out. I think we learned from the past and what was tested in the past years. And so we took some of those things and tried to reduce the impact and the negatives that the residents were expressing. And they also, we also expressed that having the boat docked all day long was not appealing and that it obstructed the view. And they are looking at ways that they can dock offshore, whether at West Point or elsewhere. So those were other things that we were proposing and asking them to do and come back to us about.
And we'd also had have heard feedback, and I hope that there'll be comment at some point. We have heard feedback about not only businesses being packed, but not having enough, literally not enough seats in the village to feed those numbers of people at one time. And so you end up with a lot of hangry folks walking around the village.
Yeah, and in terms of, you know, they're since they're testing it out, they want to see if it's worthwhile. So if they don't sell a certain number of tickets, they'll just cancel the boat too. So there is a very strong chance that a lot of these summer tours, especially the first ones in July, if we give them permission, they may not even run. So in the middle of August, I don't know how many people are going to be coming. We really don't know because we've never done this before.
I'm gonna talk through. That's the concern side. You want to talk through the the benefits that?
Sure. So the benefits of Sea Streak is the docking fees, which they they provide a critical revenue for the village and they reduce the taxpayer burden. It allows us to not raise the taxes as much as we could and keep our taxes relatively low. And those fees offset village costs. So, you know, they they do cover projects. I mean, you know, we couldn't reset. We didn't get to resurface the ball court this year. The fees we make from Sea Streak might have covered something like that. So it's, you know, not a huge chunk of money, but it's substantial.
Right. And just making clear that that as revenue under general municipal law, when revenue comes in, it can't be earmarked for a particular projects. It comes into the general fund and then as part of the budgeting process, we decide how revenue is allocated among priorities. So so we we don't earmark in particular for projects, but it creates budget relief that allows us more flexibility when we do have expenses to meet.
Right. And there's all kinds of community improvement projects that I think we all want to be done. And we often find ourselves short in the budget. So things like Sea Streak fees allows us to find revenue in places that didn't exist before. It also provides local businesses with customers that don't add to the parking shortage. So that's one benefit to the local economy and it supports the Main Street Business District, which makes the village a desirable place to live in and in turn increases all of our residential property values. So there are some benefits there that the residents feel as well, especially if you're, you know, looking to to move out and sell your home.
So limiting the boat, the number of boats per day to one, limiting the number of passengers that can disembark. And I want to be, there was a question that came in from Mr. Dorelli, who lives down on Market Street. He he asked a question about, I think there was a misunderstanding in the terms of the numbers. Sea Streak is proposing a smaller boat during the week with a maximum number of 200 during the weekdays. And then the weekend boats at 400. So it's not, they're not proposing 400 boats, I mean, excuse me, 400 people all summer long, every boat.
Right.
So limiting the people that can disembark at a time. And again, that 400 number is half of what the boats used to be. That number was established during COVID as a sort of a way to limit crowds. But it seems as if it's a much more manageable number in the village than a 600, 800 person disembarkation.
Last year, was it 400? Yeah. I mean, I have to say, from my perspective, I thought last year was manageable. Do you know, I know in terms of
the number of bodies.
And that was, you know, we we barely or didn't, we didn't have Murphy's. And so, you know, I mean, now you know, you have more seats, but still, I think 400 is a very manageable number, 800.
800 was a lot. And also, just with the number of people who've increased coming by train and by by vehicle, it's like this is this is one source we can control.
I like 400.
Okay. So I guess discussion first among among board members, how we're feeling about sort of the brackets being placed on that enterprise, if that feels like like a good fit. And then, of course, we want to hear from the public, but comments from board members first.
I have a couple of questions. So one is, am I remembering right that in the past they would provide a porta potty? Is that still, are there, is that still on the table? And are there any other, did you discuss any other ways that they can help contribute towards addressing some of the infrastructure impact?
So they would, they need to pay for an additional foot patrol in the village on those days. And that's an that's an hourly fee that Eliza has is attempting to bake into the the docking fee. In last summer, there were, or I guess in the fall, there were four porta potties. The challenge we find with the porta potties, they get used. For a while, they were at the bottom of at the top of Lower Main Street, like on the on just on the opposite side of the tracks from the visitor center. And even when they were in sight of the bathrooms, they didn't seem to get used as much. They did get, they're also right in front of, you know, people's houses and apartments. They got moved last year down to the waterfront across from the condos, sort of tucked behind the an enclosure for some of our waterworks. And that worked well, I think, worked better from a from a visual standpoint and from a bother standpoint in terms of being near where people are living. But they didn't get used so much. So I don't know. One of the questions I had is, do we, do we, if people, do we need four? Maybe we maybe we only need two. And and what's the right location? I still think from a from a in impact position, getting them out of as far as we can, out of a residential area is a good thing. But go ahead.
Dockside Park, has that ever been used or is that too far out?
Well, Dockside is a challenge this year because of the construction.
Excuse me, can I interrupt really quick? I don't know if you're you're sort of speaking away from the mic. So I don't know about everyone else, but I'm not catching some of the some of the comments. So
All of us or just Laura?
Well, more just Laura.
I can talk this way. I was just asked, and maybe that's more detail than we need to get into. I just was trying to understand about the porta potties and if I had asked if Dockside Park had ever been considered, if we were thinking of places further away, but an issue is construction.
Thank you.
And then my, and then my other question was just about the revenue. Is that something that you can explain how much that is or what what that's been in the past and how that compares to, you know, our our budget?
So we have budgeted, we have included in the budget for this year, an estimated amount of $25,000, $25,000 for revenue as a sort of a placeholder and built built that in as part of our revenue stream. And then if you want to talk about some of the things that you're looking at in terms of calculus.
Yeah. So we're looking at, you know, based on what they decide, because ultimately they're, you know, going to take the numbers we give them. They they ask for one price, we're going to ask for a higher price. But they will take the numbers back and see if it's even worth it. And there is an opportunity to increase our revenue from about 29,000, which is if you bake in the price of police and all of that, just for the autumn tours. And it could be up as much as like 44, 45,000.
So it's a big, it's a significant chunk. Yeah.
Yeah. But that would be if every tour Wednesday and Friday ran. And I'm I don't think that they're going to do that.
And I'm skeptical about the the weekday tours because of, you know, they have multiple occasion cited fuel costs. And, you know, I think it's going to be a really slim margin for them actually.
Yeah, to to pack it, to get 200 people to sign up for a weekday tour is going to be difficult for them anyway. So whether or not it's worth it depends. But I think what we gain from it is significant. And again, like, that's the cost of covering some village projects that we might not have had funding for. So it's something to consider. Tweeps, do you have any questions?
No, I mean, I think I think all the points have been raised in terms of our concerns in response to their proposal. I agree, the numbers need to stay to stay low. I think that 400 number and 200 numbers is a good place to start. I'd be curious, I guess, to see what the weekday would be like. But again, I I agree, I think it probably will be difficult for them to 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 do that, but that's their business decision. You know, that's their calculus to make. As far as the porta potties, seems that four was probably overkill last year. So two tucked away, but maybe better signage and you know, making Sea Streak tell folks where the other porta potty is. So
They were asked last year to make announcements before people disembarked, letting them know that
Yeah.
try to use the bathrooms on the boats before they disembarked and that there were porta potties available.
Clearly, we could, there's
Yeah.
never enough information that we could give people. And and so I think that in this case, you know, the more people we can get going to various toilets is probably better. And I'm really, I'm just curious to hear from from folks from the community. You know, I do think one thing to keep in mind for when people do give us comments is to really understand that this is a significant portion piece of our budget. It does, as Eliza said, make is the difference between being able to do certain projects and not. And so, you know, to keep that in mind, to try to balance that with with the other pros and cons of the of the project.
I also mentioned that, like, in the big picture, the village made a great revenue, like, I think it was 36,000 last year, $36,000 last year by crunching it together and having more boats run on the same day and things like that, which I think is part of the reason why it was so uncomfortable for everyone. Whereas what we're proposing or considering right now, rather, is spreading it out and making it more even. And the merchants can can kind of speak to the fact that, like, you know, when everybody comes on the weekends, it feels slammed and then it's dead all week long. And that's, that's not a balanced model to live by. So it's the same model with customers or or public traffic. It's like, if you have everyone crammed at one time, then it feels tight. But if you stretch it out, it doesn't feel quite as uncomfortable or crowded.
So last year, were there multiple boats in one day?
I don't know if it was last year. It was maybe two years ago or three years ago. It was a couple of years. In the past, there have been multiple boats in one day.
There were three.
Going back 2018, there were times they allowed multiple boats. 2019, we skipped. There were no, there was no docking because of COVID. 2020, but we did keep a limit of one boat, though they did bring in a larger boat. The revenue average was 22,000 or 25,000 now, 1,000. And then last year was limited to one boat per day, the larger boat. And they ran Friday sides and Sundays. I think Fridays, there was a cap of 200 people.
A small number.
Yeah.
So we're kind of carrying that model forward, which I I think that the trustees of the past kind of had learned these lessons and we're building on that.
Sorry. Also, we should note the docking in terms of not docking all day, what the suggestion and the, I guess, not suggestion, but the continuation of potentially docking at
West Point.
Thank you.
We discussed that with them and and made very clear that the 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 last option should be leaving the boat at the dock while visitors are disembarked. And they are in negotiations with West Point for docking there. And they're also looking at mooring options. I think that's that's a a whole different kettle of fish that involves Army Corps of Engineers and Coast Guard. And it's not a decision we make, but I know that they are looking at, they're looking at options. I think it's unlikely for this year. I think West Point will be the will be the alternative location for this year.
Yeah. And we're looking at pricing models that incentivize them to to dock offshore and elsewhere so that they have, I mean, they're they're business people, so they're driven by their margin. And if we can make it sweeter for them to go drop dock elsewhere and they can figure that out, then they're going to do it.
Last year, there were days identified upfront, I think there was about five of them.
Yeah.
Where they did not dock here. And that was taken into account when they was negotiating.
Part of the part of the contract laid out which days were dock days and which were not dock days. Any other trustee comments or questions before we turn on our ears?
Just about porta potties. Any consideration of putting them across from the visitor center?
I actually, that was one of the questions I wanted to raise with folks and and see what people think about having them. If logically, you would think if they're in sight and there's an alternative in sight, people standing on a long line might give up on the line and break out. I don't know where the right place to put them would be. I mean, there's, there's a bike rack next to the visitor center that could get shifted to have them on the other side of the visitor center. It is a residential property on the on the opposite corner on the at the bottom of Main Street.
Right next to the brick of the tunnel.
Oh, on that side. Haven't thought about that.
I do not, you're not, you're not want to obscure you.
Yeah, but then when you enter, like, welcome to Cold Spring on the train and then see it.
They have to go somewhere. I I know
That might be a thing people like to be.
I know this, but we have volunteers in the visitor center on the call, so maybe they can speak to their experience from when it was within sight.
Yeah.
Because I I recall hearing that if there was a brick and mortar bathroom, they were going to wait in that line, even if there were 20 people before they went into a porta potty.
We will invite our invite our our guests in the room. Would you like to make any comment?
This is a general question.
Name an address, please.
Oh, I'm Barry Goggan. I live in Cold Spring. Fair Street. Why only weekends? Why are they running in the summers would be more appropriate for them? And they're going to go in or December rather than
So they have historically run what they call a leaf peeping tour, which people from the city take to see the autumn colors and going up the Hudson River and seeing all the colors is kind of the attraction. And they've been wildly successful with it from mid-September to mid-November.
Running the weekend, the Wednesdays, Fridays, wouldn't make sense to run them on the weekends rather than Wednesday and Friday. They don't think they have enough people to come on Wednesday and Friday.
The summertime, you mean? Well, I mean, a challenge, I think, is that that's sort of peak time for the village overall for tourism. So
To my understanding, they have, their boats are used for other places during the summer. So they run to like Martha's Vineyard and things like that. And Tucket. So I think that their boats are employed otherwise on the weekend and the summer.
I have a quick question too. If you start cutting
Your name and address, please.
If they start cutting the access to the boats, I mean, what the amount of time, is that going to affect the businesses here? Because there's quite a few businesses that are closing in. There's at least six. So that's a concern.
So the boats aren't being cut?
No, with the amount
Oh, the number of people? Well, this is the level we that we've been at for the that we were at last year and seemed to work well. And maybe when, I think there are some, someone from the chamber on, it's like there's a couple of business owners, maybe they can speak to how that how that shift in numbers has felt over time and what is what has been manageable.
Yeah. I mean, I as a business owner, I mean, street can speak to the fact that over 400 was just like too many bodies. Our shops are all small. Our restaurants aren't enormous. So Cold Spring
Where the hypos are too, it gets very
Right. So combine those two streams combined.
So we don't need that much to fulfill.
I'm just concerned because I noticed today that it's quite a few shops closed and opening. Hopefully, yeah.
Are there any members of the public who would like to comment?
I would, but I don't want to get in the way of anybody who's I'm happy to.
Identify yourself?
Sure. My name is Nat Prentice. I'm not a resident of the village. I'm speaking in two capacities. The first is that of visitor center volunteer, which I've done for as many seasons as, well, I kind of unofficially took over for Catherine's dad and have in fact been trying to manage the the volunteers that are in that visitor center. The good news is we've got a nice roster these days and we've got pretty good coverage. But I made a bit of a, when I was in there last year, I made a bit of a project in interviewing people who came off the Sea Streak, particularly about the bathroom situation. And they all, they they were reasonably complimentary about the bathrooms on the boat. So there was no hesitation in using them. But when they got here, you all are right. They, you can put the porta potty right under their feet and they're they're going to stand in line for the the real bathroom. I mean, it amazed me about that. Now, if they're desperate, I'm sure they might use it, but they, there's a strong preference for the the existing bathroom rather than the porta potty. I'm not sure you could put it in a place that would change that. But I'm going to come back to something Catherine said. It it was manageable last year. I mean, it, the, we didn't get the lines around the block. We we had lines. They were very manageable, very orderly. So I think the bathroom situation is probably under control. And thank you all for keeping the bathrooms open and clean. That's really, and the reports we've had so far have been excellent about the bathrooms. I do have some comments as I'll put my other hat on, which is president of the Chamber of Commerce, the Cold Spring Chamber of Commerce, happy to answer any questions you might have. I do, and maybe you want to reserve them for another point in the meeting, but I do have several comments from merchants that were unable to be here. And I could read those comments to you, but I don't want to get in the way of anybody else. We could come back if you'd like.
There are some residents with hands raised. So why don't we start with those and come back to come back to the comments that you have from
Absolutely, Kathleen, whatever you say.
Mr. Graham? You're muted.
All right. Are we okay?
Yes, name and address, please.
Good evening. I appreciate you guys putting this public in the public discourse. I prepared something to say, but I it didn't fit because, you know, now what I'm hearing, everybody's point of view, I'm hearing some interesting things.
Excuse me for one moment, Mr. Could you, could you say your name and address, please?
Yeah, I'm Derek Graham at 32 West Street.
Thanks.
Which is the Mumu's Building.
Yes.
So I'm a ground zero observant, as is Gaston. He can attest to most of what I see. So when I speak, I feel like so these are views I've shared with some of you all, especially Eliza, an excellent trustee, as well as my friends and neighbors here. And I can say that some of the things I say, I feel are important and that represent, that aren't just my views selfish. It represents everybody's views, especially down here at the waterfront. So I'm a couple of points we didn't touch on are may even sound left field, such as the aspect of quality of life. I know it's not with Eliza because she's locked into it. I've spoken with her. She's been so generous with her time. But she she's But, uh, she, she's, uh, has a good sense, uh, that things have changed and understands. How much they've changed even in the past five years. And at Ground Zero here, we're kind of, uh, we're, a lot of us feel like we're at the end of our rope. We have so much traffic, so many people. And I don't believe, uh, that we have the infrastructure and space to really make it work. It, it, the things that don't work for us, of course, down here as residents are the noise. Um, we can't enjoy, uh, as other visitors, residents of the village, long time. Want to have a quiet picnic on the weekends, there's just no quiet. There's too many things. That's not just the boat. I don't wanna get too far away from that, but the boat doesn't make much noise, save for its horn. But the problem is the congestion and the number of people it brings. And it, my, I believe it may be a, what you'd call a Faustian bargain. That if in fact we're generating forty thousand dollars worth of revenue. In, in a liberal estimate and our budget is two and a half million. That that represents less than two percent of all of our revenue. Is that worth tolerating what, what I feel is part of the Faustian bargain? I'm referring to my notes here, are, uh, enhanced EMS services. Um, we can't, we don't know, you know, how much that actually is, um. Eliza, did you say that was a net or is that just our expected cost forty thousand a year?
Uh, I, I expect, uh, uh, that's a potential income and again, it depends on how much they end up running. So.
A top end estimate.
Yeah, that's, that's like the max we could potentially earn.
Right, that, I understand that's revenue, but the expense of it, I'm talking about police, uh, EMTs, sanitation people. Public works people, everybody does that, uh, that you have to, to make the proper equation.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. Let's, let's take those questions. What I neglected to do at the beginning is set out, set out some ground rules for time. Um, so we're trying to give everyone three minutes to talk, so let's address the questions that you've raised here. Um, and get some other folks into comments and then if we have time, we'll come back, okay?
Not gonna cut me off mid-sentence, I'm hoping.
I, I was trying.
I would just like to finish this topic out because that's not fair.
Okay, finish your sentence.
So I'm saying, is that, is forty thousand net revenue or is that just revenue? That we have yet to offset the cost. If it were net, it would represent two percent of our overall budget. Less than two percent, two tenths of a percent. Forty thousand and two point five million. Now, even if it were forty thousand net, is, that's not worth it for what we have to put up with the congestion and everything else. And I would like to know if you could get back to me what the offset. Maybe we're losing money. Maybe we have to pay the cops overtime. And EMTs or, or whatnot, but I can tell you one thing, if you live here, it, 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 we feel like it's ruined. The, the whole waterfront's ruined.
By, by the boats in particular?
By everything, not by the boat. It's everything. Too much. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment and just to be clear, the policing, the extra foot patrol that's brought on for the boats. Is covered by the, the docking fee. That's, that's baked into the fees. So that's not coming out of.
Okay, that's why I asked what was net. So I, that, that's good. You said that because that's part of the cost.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Graham. Lara?
Hi, um, I'm Lara. She have Eldon. I'm located at thirty-four Parrot Street. That's my residence. Um, I'm also, um, co-running a business at forty-four Main Street, um. And, um, I just, you know, I was listening to your discussion at the beginning, um, of the meeting. Um, and pretty heartened to see how considered, um. Uh, the, the parameters are just based on, um, you know, sort of just considering the quality of life issues. Uh, with the, um, potential, uh, benefit for the village, um, and, and the business owners. Um, so I, you know, I think limiting, I support limiting the number as Eliza was, um, discussing. Um, I, you know, I just wanna sort of speak to my experience as a new, very new, relatively new business owner on Main Street. Um, uh, we've only been open since September, um, and it's been really slow this, um, spring and quiet. Um, and, you know, at the same time, I really, um, I hear and I understand the quality of life issues. And I, I know that, you know, funds, any funds, even the small percentage of funds. That might be gained from, um, this kind of, um, agreement can't be earmarked, but I, I just wanna speak towards. Just, you know, somehow really intentionally planning for improved infrastructure, um, for visitors. So that the quality of life of the residents, um, of Lower Main, um, and, you know, can be, um. Just considered. I've, I've been on Lower Main on a weekday or on a weekend where, you know. I don't, I'm usually in the, in the shop, but I've seen the, the amount of trash that's generated by tourists and how it overflows. Um, uh, from some of the trash cans, especially, uh, near the waterfront. I, I really can sort of, um, empathize with how, um, an influx of visitors might really. Um, trigger residents in that, in that section of town. Because even, even as a visitor who is part of the village and part of the community, I see how those, you know, how trash. Is just overflowing and, and it, it's not, it's not great. Um, and I understand everyone's doing their best, so, um. We just need to catch up. So I think just the considered approach is really important. At the same time, it is really quiet, um, these days during. The week, um, Wednesdays and Fridays with that cap seems like an interesting way to test it out. To see whether it, it is a viable, um, you know, uh. Strategy for the village and for, for Main Street. Um, so that, that was it. So just can, you know, support a very balanced. Um, cautious approach to this, um, as a resident and a business owner.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Just to give you some sense of follow-up. Um, after Memorial Day, there were lots of complaints about overflowing garbage, um, at Main Street. And primarily, um, ice cream cups. Um, we, we have, um, I thought, hope folks have seen that we have new cans on Upper Main Street. There are going to be similar cans are being painted right now to put out. Um, at Lower Main Street to try to create more opportunities for folks to put away. And I am, I am attempting, um, conversations about some alternatives, um, for, for a particular source of overflow. I would encourage you all to, um, have conversations with, with, um, Mumus to see if, if they'd be willing to help. Problem solve with us because I'm trying. Um, if, if neighbors can, can help, can help with that conversation, that'd be great. Um, is there anyone else wishing to make comment at this point?
Gaston.
Hello, um, let's see, um, a couple of things. Uh, first, thank you for bringing constituents into the process. That's a really refreshing way of doing things in the village, so thank you for that. I'm glad to see that there's a consideration of having less boats, less people docking at West Point. That will make sure that they sign the contract with West Point before we agree. Um, putting the porta potties not in front of residential property, our homes. So thank you for that. I understand that, you know, that, I understand that this may look different from streets in the upper village or from business perspective. Um, I think Derek gave you a sense of what it's like for us in the lower village. Uh, and we are residents of the whole village. Uh, we don't have a political organization. Perhaps we should. So I understand the chamber will have comments from mothers presented. We don't have a political organization. We're just residents and most people don't like to show up and do this. But I've talked to many people down here. There's a number of things that they've wanted me to convey to you. And first, I think there's something really important missing from the considerations is that this summer and fall are not like previous ones. Dockside Park is, as the mayor said, a challenge. It is a construction mess. It is unable to accommodate the residents and the tourists that usually go there. As a result, already on weekends, the lawns that are next to the bandstand are overcrowded. That's where people are congregating. Right? That's gonna get worse once school ends and families, as they do, will bring their children down to the waterfront. Not just on weekends, but on the weekdays. That is, many families use the waterfront during the weekdays. And that's as it should be. Residents and families and groups of families and friends should enjoy the waterfront. It's a great area for meeting and hanging out. But because of the construction at Dockside, this year it's gonna be a lot more crowded than it was in the past. More crowded means less enjoyment for residents. More manageable perhaps and, you know, having less people perhaps was more manageable last year, but this is not last year. Right? Dockside is out of commission, right? And so it will only get more crowded in the spaces available. And the more crowded, the less the residents in the village who use the waterfront, not just live, but use it, will be able to enjoy it. Now, so if we're gonna have boats on the weekdays.
Minute and a half.
Okay, so if you're gonna have boats on the weekdays, right, then, you know, I think that's gonna affect not only the residents. But all the residents of the village who use the front, the waterfront. And so this is sort of like the last year, the worst year, the one could imagine for this, you know, uh, sort of trying this out. The other thing is that, you know, the debate has been kind of either or, either the C Street and residents suffer or we don't get the C Street and the village budget suffers. And I think that's rather narrow. We should not be counting on private companies that are headquartered in other states to solve the budget problems of the village. That leaves us hostage to the needs of private companies, leaves our ability to endure our village hostage to them. And I think that's wrong, right? We should not put the village up for sale for very little. I know that twenty-five thousand to forty-five thousand has been referred as significant. It was also referred as the cost of fixing a ball court. So please don't put the village up for sale. Don't compromise the enjoyment of the residents, right? Um, so a private company can make money, right? Budget problems should be tackled in administrative ways. Finding where to cut, finding where services are duplicate and so on, right? In terms of trash, I'm glad to see that cans are gonna be put down here as they were in the upper village. Trash is essential. We must do it well. Right? There are piles of sticky ice cream cones all over.
We're, we're, we're at three minutes. Do you wanna wrap? I, I wanna hear what you're saying. Are you able to wrap it up?
Uh, yeah, um, the last thing I'm gonna say, so that's the, the Mumu's problem, but I think you're working on that, but let's do that right. The last thing is, you know, there's already a lot of discontent from residents, from your boaters about there being too many visitors coming here. Right? Too much tourism. I understand wanting to prioritize businesses, but you have to prioritize the people who are your boaters, the people. Who live here and who will not be able to enjoy the waterfront as much this summer, especially because of what's going on at Dockside. It's just the wrong year to try something else, I think, down here. So thank you so much for listening to me. Uh, I wanted to give you a sense of what people are talking about down here, where your constituents down here are staying. So thank you.
Very much for commentary. I think that's, that's part of why we're having this conversation is to, to try to be, to be more balanced and more resident focused. Than we have in these conversations in the past. That's exactly why we, we've opened this forum. Are there any other comments from the public?
Becky?
Uh, yes, hi. Uh, my name is Robert LeBlanc and this is my daughter Nicole LeBlanc. And we have the shops at one oh three Main Street in Cold Spring. Uh, we've been there for about seven years and, um. We've been trying to make a place that's good for people to, to come, like kids and stuff like that. We have a candy store and we have a toy store and. Uh, we try to make it something for the community, places we even sell Band-Aids and all kinds of things like that. So that people don't have to go to, uh, you know, go out of the area or off the Main Street to get things. And that's kind of, it's been very, very difficult for us to stay in business. Um, and I think it's very important, uh, if you're looking at quality of life is to have, uh, you know, local stores, um, and they. Just to have a place that kids can go so that they're not, they're staying, they come in, they see us, they talk to us for a while. They go into another store, they go into the bookstore and there's a lot of things for them to do that way. Um, and it's difficult for us to stay in business, so any considerations that you make. That can bring, uh, a season to us is very helpful. So I think that's just something, I just wanted to quickly just say that as, uh, a reason why I think that should be, that's just, because you should consider that. Okay, that's about it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Reading from.
I'm having a hard time seeing, so is there somebody?
I don't see any other comments, but.
So Nat, you, you said that you had.
Yes, yes, I can do this in a minute and a half easily. Uh, the first comment is from Marcos, uh, from the, how is it properly pronounced? The Rincon, uh, Argentine facility in Lower Main Street. He says, yes, C Street will be very good for our shops. Hope they can come as soon as possible. Thank you. Uh, the second comment is from, uh, Erin Murphy, owner of Residuar at one oh one Main Street. And she says, I apologize, I'll read fast. Apologize for not being able to attend in person. Appreciate the opportunity to be heard. Thank you, Nat. As a small business here on Main Street, I'm very much in favor of the C Street adding the additional summer days to their visits here in Cold Spring. It has been a somewhat slow and unpredictable season so far for businesses and knowing that regular consumers will be visiting our village is very encouraging. I believe it would be incredibly helpful to all to have consistent and reliable foot traffic. Additionally, with the current state of the economy, which would likely get worse before it gets better, I think as a village, we should all take opportunities. To make sure our businesses on Main Street feel secure so they can continue to bring a vibrant atmosphere to our community. I think Fran, I have a comment from Fran, but I think she's on the line unless, of course, she wishes me to speak for her.
I'll go ahead and, and jump in here. Sorry, my video isn't working today. Um, I did also make a comment that.
Fran, could you, could you state your name and address, please?
Sure, Fran Fonerato, uh, owner of the Gift Hut at eighty-six Main Street.
Thanks.
Okay, um. I also made a comment with Nat, but I will tell you what I stated and that is that, you know. We are always welcoming to C Street. We did feel that last year's, uh, max that they put on it was very. Very manageable throughout Main Street. Heard that comment from many merchants as well. And from the restaurants, I think they felt comfortable with that. Um, I am concerned that the traffic has been soft this year. The foot traffic has been a lot less. I do expect that it's going to be a tough year with the economic areas, Erin also stated. So I think anything that we can do to keep our businesses in business and survive through this time. Would be very much appreciated and, and helpful to everyone on, uh, in the business community. We want to stay. We want to be here. We want to support all the local people as well. So these, these boats help us offset our own expenses.
Thank you. I think we have one more comment from Gaston and then we'll bring it back to board discussion.
I'm sorry to jump in, but trying to sort of equalize the voices here. Again, residents don't have a chamber to represent us. And I, you know, credit to them for doing a good job today. Um, perhaps we should organize a political organization of our own. But, you know, residents boats, boat and businesses don't. And so I want to beg you to please prioritize the needs of the residents. I know you've also received some letters, but please prioritize the needs of the residents of your constituents. Um, you know, the people down in the waterfront, it's a neighborhood. There's families here. We live here. We're also your constituent. We should not have to bear the brunt of this, right? So that others can benefit, right? Um, this is not a year like any other year. Dockside, which traditionally is where people go, is a mess and close. It will be till at least.
You have new comments to make, Gaston? These are, these are comments that you've made already. Do you have new comments to make?
My only important comment is we've heard nine different voices from businesses, only two residents. Don't take that as a sign that residents are not upset. It's just a sign that residents don't like to talk like in this forum. Please prioritize the lives, the life quality of your residents, okay?
Understood, and there are residents, there are residents in the room. Um, and this is, this is an issue that's being looked at from all angles. And I think it should be, I'm hoping that it's becoming clear to, to you and your neighbors. That, you know, we have been advocating very strongly for impact mitigation around Dockside, around the coming Fuhrer Trail. We recog, we recognize that it is another residential neighborhood that is, that is impacted by tourism. It is also a unique neighborhood because it is in fact on a public waterfront. Um, and so some of this is the reality and the, and the, 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 the real great privilege of, of living on a Hudson River waterfront. It is a place that is open to the public and we will not, we can't stop people from visiting. The river belongs to everyone. It's a matter of finding balance. And I hope that we can have continuing conversations for ways that we can incrementally address the things you're raising, right? So, so garbage became a big issue on Memorial Day. We've taken some incremental steps to help there and we're experimenting and seeing how we can make that better. It's an ongoing conversation and not just, it's not just a C Street conversation. It's a larger, ongoing conversation about quality of life.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I didn't mean, I, I don't wanna be, I, I don't want to come across the wrong way. I am very grateful for you keeping your promise of the election to hold this meeting. Do listen to people. I am very grateful for you keeping your promise of the election to hold this meeting, to listen to people, that your promises to take are, it's clear that this is a very different approach and it's refreshing and wonderful. Thank you. Uh, but I just wanna make sure that, you know, and also, I live here, I love when there's families of kids who are residents in the village in front of my house. I love that. And there's a lot more cuz they can't go to Dockside, right? And I love that, I don't mind that. But to also add to that more people means that not only I and my neighbors, but the residents of the village who come to the waterfront won't be able to enjoy it as much.
That's exactly the reason that we're reducing numbers. I mean, we're hearing you.
Okay, no, I, I get that. I just, I wish more of my neighbors were here. I know they are concerned. Perhaps they'll speak at the ballot box, I'm not sure, but, you know, there are a lot of folks who feel this way. We are grateful for you allowing this to be public, for you addressing our needs. But I want you to, going forward, not to be misled by the fact that there were nine voices from the business community and only two from the residents. That's a shame, but it doesn't reflect what's happening.
Gaston, just, just to note, we're residents too. Right? Like, we're not, we don't.
No, I get that, I get that. And you've been great in terms of leading, making sure we have this meeting, but you're not residents of the lower village, like, you know, there's that, but, you know, you've been great about ensuring that we have this meeting today, so I thank you for that.
Okay.
Mr. Graham?
If, if there are new comments, right? Please.
You noticed a new, a new comment, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Ah, sir. I, I'll be brief. I just wanted to point out that, um, I do, and I think a lot of residents, we, we like the proprietors, we like the small businesses here. We, we're, we're friendly with them and we agree with a lot of the same things. So we're not adverts, we're not adversaries. And I, I think Gaston would agree, you know, we do business with people in the room and for years. The other thing, uh, I just wanted to point out, was it considered, you can answer this later, that the, the way Putnam operates its tax fund, that if there's more business in Cold Spring, that doesn't necessarily align our coffers. That goes to the slush fund in Putnam where the backroom, backroom good old boys decide where this goes. Is it a new Renegade Stadium or in lieu of COVID or? These are the operators of where that money goes. That's just a little food for thought.
Right, and a little food for thought back to you. I, I just wanna recognize the efforts of trustee Starbuck and town council member Jason Angel, who went forward to the county um, in the fall and winter to propose a share the growth um, program that would get some money back from, from sales tax. You're right, it's wrong that, that we don't get any tax back here, any sales tax back in the village. I feel like in the last six months, we've made strides toward beginning to change that. We're waiting. You should pay very close attention to the legislative process at the county. Over the next two months, they're just entering their budget season and the proposal brought forward for share the growth by the county executive um, after advocacy by Jason and, and Eliza and many others across the county has been taken forward to the legislature and the legislature must now approve what she has proposed to authorize the money to come back. So please do pay attention, not just to our meetings, but please watch what is happening at the county legislature and advocate, make comments, please, that will help us bring money back home too. Lloyd? Yep? Lloyd?
Lloyd, you muted?
Hi. I think, thank you. I don't have video today. So apologies for the wind. Um, I.
Dress, Lloyd?
Lloyd Davis, thirty-four West Street, um, in the lower village. Uh, thank you for having this workshop and for, for hearing me. I should have spoken up earlier, but um, I, I just wanna echo what everybody else in the lower village has said. The quality of life suffers a lot. Um, it will suffer a lot with Dockside closed. It already suffers a lot with Boomos. Um, I know everybody loves it. I love it too, they're my neighbor. Uh, I don't understand how they're allowed to operate without trash cans. I don't know why the village should have to pick up after them. There are just a lot of things about it I don't get. Maybe you can think about that too at some point. But my, the real thing I came here to, 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 right now to, to ask and to, to kind of understand is the, the money. Twenty-five to forty thousand dollars to me doesn't sound like a lot. How is it calculated? Is it a per-person charge? It just seems like a drop in the pan to me and no money at all to, uh, for the sacrifice that's, that's made, uh, in the community. So I just would like to, to understand more about how this calculation is made for this one or two percent of the budget. Um, I know I didn't announce, but how is it made?
So I'm gonna ask Eliza.
It just seems, it seems so low, that's all.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask Eliza to answer the, the portion about how we've arrived at these estimates and calculations, and then I would like to talk about the budgeting process. Go ahead.
Great. Um, so we, we looked at different models and the model that the village has historically used is, um, per linear foot of the boat, so the bigger the boat, the more they pay. Um, which again encourages and incentivizes, uh, the boats to be smaller. Um, they have asked us to consider a per-ticket um, approach and, um, I, I think the mayor would agree with me that that is too much risk for us. They're, they're taking a business risk by running a boat when they're not sure if they can get enough customers and we don't think it's worth the low end, you know, if the lowest is a hundred tickets that they sell, that shouldn't be our risk and we don't feel the village to take that. Um, so we're, we're sticking with the, the linear foot or per-boat pricing that, um, trustee Early and Mayor Mirandi had set in the past. Um, it seems to be the most, uh, logical approach and, um, the pricing is really based on what the market rate is in other places and, um, if, if we price it too high, they won't come, which I, I hear some residents saying they would rather they don't come. Um, but when you look at our entire budget, and if you've ever been through the village bu, budget process, it's torture for the trustees because there are so many projects we cannot fund. You, you get streets, you get, um, you know, police officers, you get, uh, basic park mowing. You, you get water and sewer and garbage, and that's what your pa, your taxes cover, basically. And we wanna see, as trustees, as villagers, we wanna see, um, painted crosswalks and murals and pollinator gardens and dog runs and all these great ideas, that escape parks that are coming out. And we don't have any funding for that. And, and I don't think anybody wants their taxes to go up.
I, I think we need to start at a very basic discussion about, about budget. I would really encourage all of you, budget time is a very lonely time at Village Hall. We would love to have more public engagement with that process. I can tell you, we, the revenue streams, because of the sales tax situation that, that Mr. Graham has rightly described, the revenue streams for the village are limited and we have to take advantage of those that we have. We are, trustee, um, Fatty is working toward metering Main Street to the culmination of all the work that's been done over time. We have, we have to optimize revenue sources and this is, this is one of them. The, we have cut, I can't, we cut so many things and we're so creative this year with this budget and we're able to accomplish employee raises, like real meaningful employee raises that hadn't happened in a very long time. Get bringing people closer to reasonable living wages and that was really very, very important to us. That's, that's part of what gets offset by revenue streams as well is employees who deliver your services. Um, we found ways to, um, make more efficient, right? We've, we've, we've kept, we've kept the promise on garbage to, 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 um, deliver services in ways that are more cost-effective. Um, we're getting an additional sewer plant operator. All of these things didn't accomplish because we had massive amounts of new money. We had to work really hard to get to where we were and to not raise taxes. We kept taxes down below one point eight percent. That's important to everyone as well. So at some point, I think part of this consideration from a financial perspective is what is it that, what is it that we want to accomplish as a community in terms of quality of life? Right? And how do we get there? And we have to have some sources of revenue to get there. Either that or we have to jack taxes. And I don't think that, I don't think that goes over very well either. So it is all about, it is all about balance. And I assure you, we are so open to any creative thinking that people have about how to do things better and more efficiently. And please come back to us next year, after January, when we start the budget process again, please put on your thinking caps and come back to us with creative ideas both for savings and for revenue. I don't see any more hands. Yes?
I wanna add something here.
Our clerk would like to make a comment?
The village does have an application for docking that, or anybody who wants to dock a village has to fill out, and there are fees in that, and the fees that Sea Streak, um, that we charge, Sea Streak are based on the docking application. And that calls for it's eight dollars per linear foot, the size of your boat, if you do not stay docked at, um, at the dock. And it's twelve hours, uh, twelve dollars per foot for if you do stay docked. So that's the starting point, and that has been the starting point the last few years for the calculations.
Now, that was established as a way to set a baseline. Um, Michael?
So my question is, where are we at now then, based on the comments tonight?
Could you, for the record, could you identify yourself? We know who you are, but that's part of the process.
Mike Turton with the Highlands Current.
Thank you.
So what happens after tonight, based on all the comments tonight, where are you actually at with Sea Streak and, uh, what's next?
So we'll be taking feedback from this meeting, looking at numbers again and meeting with Sea Streak again on Friday. A contract will be drafted and that contract will come back to this board and will be discussed in public.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, we do have other business to attend to, so seeing no other hands. I'm, I'm very grateful to folks for taking time to come out and make comments, and I'm particularly grateful for residents, um, for residents on Lower Main Street being here tonight. Thank you. Um, okay, so we'll close the public comment period and move on to item number five. Officer in charge Burke has made a recommendation to hire Veronica Balinsky as the parking enforcement officer. Um, as everyone knows, I think, our much-loved parking enforcement officer finished his undergraduate education and is off being a, a proper anthropologist these days. Um, and Veronica comes to us from, um, the sheriff's department cadet program. She's a graduate of that program. She is wanting to make a career in law enforcement. Um, and she's, she's very motivated to do this job and she says she is not afraid to be yelled at about parking tickets. Um, so, and she's a, that, that, that is a key element in having, uh, keeping vehicles moving in the summer, parking in the right places and managing, managing movement. So we, we need her. So, um, I would like to, um, make a motion to accept Officer Burke's recommendation to hire Veronica.
I have a question. Um, who, did anyone have a chance to interview her? Her resume was fabulous, by the way.
I did, I did. Yeah, and she's great, she's great. I think she's got a, she's got a lot of promise and she's looking to build out her resume. She's an undergraduate at, I believe she said Pace, it's on the resume. Um, we have the actual resume with us. Anyway, she's doing it, John Jay. She's doing it today, John Jay. Saint Johns?
Oh, Saint Johns.
Saint Johns. She's doing a criminal law degree. So that is my motion. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Um, next item is appointment of chairperson for the ad hoc committee on short-term rentals. Um, I would like to nominate Jen Swarick, um, to be the chair. It's a number of reasons that I have um, decided that I think should be an excellent chair. First of all, she is, she is not a short-term rental operator. She's a resident and I think it's important to have that balance in the chairmanship, um, on, on this committee. Uh, Jen has, she's an experienced board trade chair. She chairs our tree advisory board. Uh, she runs a really tight meeting and she's really good at working on tight deadlines. Um, and we wanna keep this process moving forward. Um, she's really diplomatic, um, and she has experience writing municipal code. She did write our, um, our tree ordinance with it, with a group of others, that she loved that effort as well. So I think that she would be, um, an excellent person to chair this, this ad hoc committee. That is my motion.
I will second that. Uh, any experience I have ever had with her was, I mean, she's top of her game, she gets it done. She's organized and, and extremely diplomatic.
Yeah.
And she's expressed.
Yes.
Going up to the.
Yes.
She wants to be on Stu Chair? Okay.
Um, yeah, I support Jen.
So all in favor?
Hi.
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 Enthusiastic eye. That was you, you saying I, right, tweets?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, next, um, is a common situation around the village. Property lines all over the village, particularly on Main Street, but also on the side streets shimmy all around. Um, and that means that sometimes people don't own the property, their stoops are on, their porches are on. Um, it makes hard, makes it hard for folks to do repairs. Um, and this is a, this is a really uh, clear example of how repairs can be difficult. So the property line at fourteen and sixteen Stone Street goes right up against the brick facades of the building. Um, are you able to share the, the screen, Jeff, so that the public knows what we're talking about? Thank you. Um, the, the property line goes right up to the houses. So in front of fourteen and sixteen, there are sort of wells and there are entrances to the buildings via those wells on stairs, in addition to the stoops that come down from the main doors. Um, so this retaining wall that currently belongs to the village is failing. Um, it has, you can see a crack right where the cursor is, there's a crack along that top, water's getting behind it, forcing it out. It's, it's a collapse waiting to happen. Um, it also seems to have been made worse by, um, modifications to the grade of that road a number of years ago. Uh, there's almost no curb on that sidewalk, so water just gushes down. And just on the, just, just on the sidewalk side of that X, um, there is a piece of bluestone. And when you raise that piece of bluestone, there is nothing underneath it. And that is what, that is what's stupid sitting on. So this, this needs some real work. Um, and obviously the property owners would like to make that investment in making their property better, but they would like to own the property to do that before they make the investment. For us, it, for the village, it reduces liability, getting that, um, into private ownership um, and also gets these small chunks back on the tax roll. So we have, there are examples of us having sold stoops all around the village in recent years to, to help people get through these projects. Um, this will be a bit tricky as it goes forward because you see how the sidewalk makes a jog there. Um, this is one of the places where we're going to need, um, we're gonna need a village engineer to, to help us solve how we deal, how we deal with this sidewalk jog. Um, and, and keep the sidewalk safe enough to code. Um, but at any rate, the, the beginning of this process is for the trustees to agree that selling this property is a good idea. And then from there, surveys are done um, and a contract negotiated with our, with the village attorney and the residents approved by us. So, so the question, given that, first of all, any, any questions or comments on that scenario that I've laid out?
Um, if it's the case that this, if this is common in the village, is there any kind of, um, kind of slippery? Would it then raise concerns for other, that, that then we're gonna get lots of requests for, for purchasing land or, or on the other hand?
That's ideally what happens.
Yeah.
So we want, yeah, we, to get these, to get these on, off our liability list and, and into private ownership where they should be.
And then how about the flip side of it, that then, I mean, I suppose we're already then liable for all of these stoops and places that are kind of, I mean, it's sort of a given.
Yeah. Um, so, so the, an example of a flip side where a sale happened similar to this and, and, and now we probably, if, looking back, we probably would have done it differently. This is before all of us were trustees, but the, uh, the top portion of the wall on Main Street between the light and Orchard Street, that one chunk of the wall that didn't get repaired got sold. got sold a number of years back to enable the property owner to make modifications on her porch. Well, we shouldn't have sold the wall at the same time. So we have to make sure that as we make these choices, we're making smart decisions, right? That we're properly surveying and making good decisions. And we also work with the town's property, the, the assessment officer to establish a base sale. And it has been four, it was just up to four dollars and sixty-five cents a square foot to make sure that we're, we're offering a a competitive amount for sale.
And it would be just to the, the other side of the retained wall and then we maintain the, the sidewalk.
I don't know without the survey. We haven't had the survey done yet. But it's, it's in front of these two, these are side by side. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so would anyone like to make this motion?
I'll make a motion to proceed with the sale of the well and wall areas in front of fourteen Stone Street and sixteen Stone Street to the residents. At four dollars and
We don't have to do that now. Now it's just agreeing to, to say, to sell. A second? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, thanks. And I'm glad to see that moving forward. Okay, next is approval of minutes from the force fix session. This time, we are all available to vote on the minutes. But I was absent, so we needed the rest of you here.
Wasn't. Right.
Oh, no, it's right. It is a joke. That's why we needed Catherine back. Right. So Catherine, Eliza and Tweets can vote on this set.
Motion to approve the minutes of April sixth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
And.
And I, and I do also.
Okay, next is approval of bills. Would one of our audit trustees like to make a motion regarding the batches?
You're the first one, I'll be the second.
Calling your lead. Uh, motion to approve batch number sixty-five oh four for the current year in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Just for clarity for the public, yes, I, I say I. We are, this is the transition point when we're moving from one budget year to the next. So that motion closed out or is for the current year, current year, new items and the motion that Laura is about to make relates to closing out the year prior.
It's not closing out, Bill.
Nearly closing out, getting closer to closing out.
There will be more.
Thank you, Jeff.
The next month.
Great. Uh, I make a motion to approve bills from the prior year, batch number six-five oh three in the amount of one hundred, four thousand, three hundred and fifteen and thirty-six cents.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. We have a stop the share. Thank you. So we do have an opportunity, another opportunity for public comment. If anyone would like to make comment on the business items or anything else. Seeing, seeing none. Michael, yes.
You muted, Mike.
When do you expect comments from John first on the flag question? Will he be commenting on all three options or just the just the, the, the option of receiving no requests? And, yeah.
So based on our last public conversation on the topic, he has been asked to develop a draft policy for not hanging flags. Um, I'm hoping that we'll see that for our meeting next week, but we don't have the draft yet.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, any other comment? Anything else from trustees? Seeing none and make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Nat, everyone, thanks so much for coming in.
Ain't that much on TV.
How long have you lived in the village? How long have you lived in the village?
Two years.
Right on, welcome.